Good afternoon and welcome to the beginning of city council's budget hearing process. Would a clerk please take the role?
Irving Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Laval.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
I'm here too.
Eight members present.
Thank you very much. As mentioned, this is the beginning of city council's budget hearing process. Today, we will have an overview and policy discussion of the 20 of the proposed 2021 budget given by our budget office. And so with that, I will now turn it over to Mr. Bill Urbanic as well as Michael Strollit.
Yes, hello, everybody. Give me a second here and we'll get this show on the road. Thanks for the opportunity to have us here today to speak with you. Okay. Welcome to the 2021 budget proposal overview and policy discussion. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm joined here, of course, with Mike Strelak who finance here as welcomed. We're here to talk about the 2021 PDUota budget proposal. That includes $570 million in revenue, 563.7 millions in expenditure. A $3 billion five-year plan, which is down $244 million from our last five-year plan. Revenue is decreased by 38 million expenditures decreased by 44 million. For the first six months, budgetarily, there's 900 police officers. The increases that we had due to arbitration with police, fire, and other EMS contracts are included in this budget. There's also a salary freeze for all non-union employees. Benefits, implementation of other contracts are also included in here. The city statutory obligations. Portion of pension will be $104.3 million and debt service $57 million. That's money that we we can't really spend, but it's money that's statutorily obligated by us. This proposed budget is an interim six-month budget that will need to be amended during the first few months of the year due to the tremendous revenue loss of the city through this COVID crisis. This proposal enables us to have a balanced budget so we can legally begin to pay bills at the beginning of the year. And it assumes the city shall receive, it's hoping that the city shall receive federal and or state dollars for that revenue loss we have sustained. Or we would need to drastically cut beginning July 1st our expenditures. As I mentioned, debt service and pension or contractual obligations that must be paid and take priority over everything, including payroll and other budgetary items. The portion of Pago is $7.5 million. That's being dedicated from the general fund. And we're looking at taking out a $55 million bond for the capital budget. That'd be 62 and a half million dollars in capital. The 2021 PDUota proposal attempts to preserve filled positions, city services, and capital investment in a minimal way. The interim budget with the crisis option. Is there if a minimum 26 million in federal assistance or other sources of revenue does not materialize before June 30th? That option would drastically propose draconian cuts to police, fire, EMS, public works, and across all city departments beginning on July the 1st. The total estimated revenue loss in 2020 was $76.4 million. Loss in 2021 from the 2025 year plan we passed was $54 million. We would need an influx of 130.5 million to get us back to where we were before the COVID crisis. In 2020, it is estimated before the end of the year, we will have used $55 million of our current fund balance. This revenue problem, of course, quickly becomes an expenditure problem. Here's how the revenues line up on a percentage basis. What we're looking at here is the revenue, which is down, of course, $38 million from the 2020 budget. And it's actually $38 million greater than the estimated actuals. That that revenue in real estate tax takes up a little bit as far as a percentage goes. And it takes down a little bit with earned income tax as well. You see a little increase in intergovernmental rate revenues. But basically, the real estate revenue is our stable revenue. It's what we anticipate coming in. It's down a little bit in projections, but from a percentage basis, very low. The wage-based taxes, that would be earned income tax and the payroll tax are in flux right now. And of course, we know parking amusement tax and the other entertainment type taxes that are dependent upon entertainment have been decimated. Hopefully, some of these things will come back. We're not sure, though, depending upon COVID. There's no telling how they may or may not perform. We're in new uncharted territory right now. The revenue loss for 2021 and 2020, according to five-year plan, and then as I had mentioned here, I just wanted to show you by revenue line what those losses look like. Real estate tax will be down $3 million, but once again, it's 150 million dollar line. So that's not a lot of money from a percentage standpoint, earning contacts is one, of course, based on wages. So people become unemployed. Businesses close. We don't get as much money, you know, but one of the saving graces on that is that we have a lot of larger businesses in the financial sector and others being a larger city. So we do have a lot of folks that were able to continue to work. The payroll tax also down, once again, based on salaries of for-profit organizations. The parking tax in this 2021 five-year plan, $8.4 million. And you see other issues, fine and forfeitures, charges for services and such, and of course, the amusement tax here being down significantly. So that total revenue loss there compared to the five-year plan is $54 million. I'm showing you the expenditures real quick. Once again, these will change, repeat again, two-step reduction. Six months maintains current bare bones with note a few layoffs, but elimination of positions. That second six months is the huge cuts that exceed an additional $26 million. And as you can see here, public safety makes up 31% general government. That's what we do. That's what finance. That's every other department. And of course, we always separate out the public works functions between DPW and and GOMI. There's debt, can't change that pension. He really can't change that. Some of those benefits will change depending upon active employees that will be laid off or positions eliminated. You can see a little reduction there. But here's where we're going to have to take that money from, and I'll sort of reinforce that on this next slide. Because it's people cost, majority of what we do in government is based on what people do. So when you need to save huge amounts of money, it's kind of hard to avoid eliminating positions and eliminating employees, active employees as well from the budget. The 2021 expenditure reductions, once again, I have it in blue. You could invert it either way. But basically, operating departments reduced by 34 million pension, very little change, healthcare $2.2 million. That's on the assumption that positions are eliminated. Debt service has gone up. The different debt choices we've made over the last three, four years now have have been applied to our debt service. And that adds an additional $13 million that we have to pay. So the total expenditure reduction on this 2021, based on the the estimated budget is $33 million. And that's a 4% reduction. Overall, it would be an 8.4% reduction from that forecast, that $50 million that I showed you previously. It's calling for across-the-board elimination of those vacant positions and also by attrition. And that's where we're at right now with those expenditures. Now that second six-month budget, all departments will share in this pain. Every single apartment shares in that pain in 2021. Except, of course, for the tiny office of community health and safety, which is brand new. And I think it's just a little bit of money being dedicated over their $20,000. You also will see that the Department of Bureau of Medical Services actually looks like it goes up, but that's due to a change in Medicare billing by the state. If not for that extra $1.36 million going into any EMS, it would show $1 million or 4% decrease. I'd like to get into the details of all these budget cuts as we go through our departmental. That's most appropriate. So once again, here's that six-month budget. If there is an influx in revenue into the City General Fund, there will be there is an influx, it'd be in need to furlough hundreds of employees throughout the city. Service cuts in all areas such as public safety may prove to be untenable as well as risky if we do not receive some sort of funding. We all believe this is temporary. Eventually, the COVID crisis will subside. But in the interim, we will need to figure out how we move on to the other side of it. So doom and gloom. With that, I'd like to hand this off to a little brighter forecast. And let's talk about the capital budget with Mike Strelak.
It gets the good stuff. Yeah, so the 2021 capital budget actually has more money in it than last year, which is welcome news. We do have a little bit less in Pago, right? We went through our fund balance, so we have less money in the bank to transfer over to capital budget. We make it up for that with additional borrowing this year, which is certainly reasonable now because we, like I said, have less Pago, but I would caution against doing that going forward. But still, we're $124 million in capital spending this year. If Bill can go to the next slide, that that's quite a bit. When I first started here, capital budgets were about 25 million. I remember two years when it was under 15 million. So having $62 million of city money going on the capital budget is is quite a bit. And, you know, we'll be able to catch up on that deferred maintenance. Now, I'm sure all members of their staffs have gone through the capital budget and have noticed that a lot of the things they asked for, they didn't get. Which if Bill can go to the next slide, we'll do a little math and explain how that happened. So we have $76 million between bond and Pago and sort of the flexible CDBG, but a lot of that money is already spoken for. So the off-the-top projects like Council CDBG and ACBO is fully funded this year, just like it was last year. So we won't have to have that fight again, which is great. That's less money for the other projects. The matching funds, the money we need to put up for the bridges and for the recycling cans that council authorized a couple of minutes ago or a couple of months ago. Those are all great projects, but that leads to less money in this budget. The ongoing project, so in prior years, when we'd want to do a park, we'd set aside $6 million and it would take us three or four years to spend that down. We started accounting for that better. So now we do the design, the build, the build, spread the budget over three years, which is good. But now, when we're already started work on South Side Park and Sheridan Park and Arsenal Park, that eats up almost $16 million of the capital budget. So less money for this year. The promised projects of the stuff that, you know, we city's been talking about doing for years, the Bus Rapid Transit and the Mon Oakland Connector. That eats up a lot of the budget. There's only about $19 million left or whatever. What the the 250 requests from departments and the URA and 100 requests that came from council. And you throw $17 million in asphalt, that leaves $1.5 million competing for the 368 projects that were requested, which may explain why one of the projects requested by council members did not get funded. That's all I have on the capital budget, but if Bill can go to the next slide, also remind council and the public that there's a lot of money going through every year that council does not authorize annually. Trust funds, city calls them the trust funds, but other people may know them as the special revenue accounts, agency funds. We have impressed funds. There's almost $100 million there in 68 off-book accounts that council is not approving by December 31st. And that does not include the parks tax, which is still on council's table, but not implemented. And Bill, back to you for the five-year plan.
The doom and gloom. Here we go. The proposed five-year plan, as I mentioned, is $244 million, less than the previous one. And we have to pay attention on this slide down here. And that is our portion of fund balance over expenditures. Of course, our expenditures reduce as well too, so it makes it a little bit more difficult. Providing any unseen circumstances, the city can return to a fun 10% fund balance according to our ordinance, which we're now amending. They will be allowed to use some of that fund balance in the in the future here and get below that 10%. We'll get more into the fund balance in the five-year plan again at tomorrow's meeting with with OMB. But I think that's the the main takeaway here regarding that five-year plan. Also, if you look at debt service as a percentage of expenditures, we wanted to stay under 12% with that. We start hitting that unless we begin to increase those revenues on that end. Continue to see us booting up against what our what we had determined as a council, the council had determined was best practice. So the five-year plan, once again, the one that's proposed now is predicated on that July 1st, 2021 drastic cuts. If we get any revenue, it will need to be modified. I threw together a couple of solutions. These are things that a budget director does. They're just suggestions and things out there. The budget before council actually provides for little additional expenditure reduction. There's not a lot really to cut left. And I think the elimination of vacant positions and also by attrition is going to restrict a lot of the managerial flexibility that we have come accustomed to. So things that you normally would get done with a phone call. Oh, yeah, we can get this done. We can get that done. We can process this contract or that contract. It may take a little longer or may not get done at all. The revenue increase that would be in the form of the Heroes Act that could provide funds directly to the general fund. That would help us. That would be one of the solutions. However, as we know, the dependence on state and federal funds are uncertain at this point. So revenue, as I said, I'm just throwing things out here. Local state and revenue options could also be considered if we can't depend on the feds. We probably will know that within the first quarter of the year, whether we're going to be able to depend on the feds or not, or get something. A temporary real estate tax increase for 2021 only. Just reminding you, 1 mil equals approximately $16 million. We can ask the state for a nonprofit payroll tax, something that's been on the plate for for many years since 2004, since we passed the tax. What that payroll tax would do is it exempt all the nonprofits with payrolls under $5 million, which essentially gets the top 30 highest paying organizations. Many hospitals and insurance companies then pay. The institution of that tax could help solve that problem, 20 to 25 million dollars in revenue potential. Of course, once again, that's something the state has to do. Can we lobby for it? Can we ask for it? Yeah. But in lieu of that, one of the things we can do, which we had done in the past and which also is available to us in accordance with the state law, is a renegotiation of nonprofit pilot agreement with, if you isolated that to hospitals and insurance companies for 2021 and 2022, we may be able to get some additional funding to help us bridge the gap. If you add that in with other measures such as continuing to pursue the billboard tax litigation, one to $2 million, maybe up to $4 million there. We have market-based revenue opportunities initiatives that haven't fully been implemented. It's at least $500,000. We can do it in a way that creates money for the general fund or offsets additional money that we would we would spend elsewhere. We could re-resurrect one of Mayor Murphy's plans, and that was for refuse fee. Depending upon how much you charge, you would get between 11 to 22 million dollars. Other ideas, old ideas that have gone through this council in the past, the hospital bed tax, a tuition tax, and something that's being tried around the country right now. And this again is state legislation, and that would be for the state to legalize marijuana and utilize the additional revenues to to supplement municipalities and school districts as it was done in Colorado. So the challenge is, of course, COVID, COVID code, it's it's uncertainty. We don't know what's going to happen in the future here. We've a lot of folks thought that things would subside by this time of year. Of course, Dr. Fauci said early on that we're going to have resurgence in the fall. There's some hopeful things, of course, with being talked about nationally. That, you know, vaccines and therapeutics are going to help to to get us back to normal a little sooner. But even at that, how are we going to come out on the other end? We're unsure. So those revenues are going to continue to be something that we may need to adjust or look for different revenues approaches in the future to deal with the the aftermath of the COVID problem. Federal and state assistance, I mean, even if we get this one time, we're still going to need some sort of support from the the feds and the the state in order to accomplish all the great initiatives that this council has done. One of the bright spots has been police reform in this budget, and that's something brought about through the ordinance the council passed. It's going to end up dedicating $6 million to the Stop the Violence Fund, trust fund. And a an initiative by council members, Finance Chair Lavelle and Councilman Burgess, of course, that other members have helped to pass. This initiative helps to deal with with one of the other major problems of 2020 that has risen to the surface in 2020. However, even with that, there's still challenges because we will need to coordinate assistance and and funding from both the county and other various nonprofit agencies. So in summary, this budget allows the city to have legally balanced budget to help us pay our bills. The six-month expenditures based on the elimination of those vacant positions and attrition that will limit our managerial flexibility, but will allow us to to sign checks. The second six-month budget, however, if we don't receive some sort of funding, provides for the large cuts across the city, including public safety that may be untenable. In order to resolve the revenue problem, the city will have to have an influx of funds between 26 million, 130 million dollars. Federal and state funds through something like the Heroes Act would need to be passed by Congress that would provide that needed relief. Of course, council could also, and the administration, of course, would need, could consider other revenue measures and may have to after the beginning of the year. My hope is that we'll be back here before the end of the first quarter, amending the the budget with revenue. And hopefully that revenue from the from the feds and state and and other entities to avoid that July 1st draconian cuts. With that, I'd like to take a moment to thank our counterparts in the Office of Management and Budget, Kevin Paulus, Patrick Cornell, Kim Osterman, and everyone else who shared information and discussed for the many issues confronting us. I'd also like to thank the Finance Department, Mayor Dan Gilman, and of course, our Finance Chair Daniel Mel, who helped coordinate a productive preliminary budget process in this extraordinary time Zoom and and not being able to get into the office. So let me end this show. And get us back here. So I guess Councilman Lavelle, I guess we can open up for questions.
Yep. Are there questions and or comments from members? Councilman Coghill.
I just want a quick question, Director Urbanic. And yeah, it looks pretty bleak, I'd say. The nonprofits, you said over $5 million, you know, implementing a tax payroll tax on them has to be done through the state legislature.
That's correct.
Okay, seems like a long hard road for me and not real possible. What about in the past, I believe, under the Ravensdale administration? Didn't they voluntarily give a certain amount per year?
Yes, that's my second point on on the revenue slide is that we have the ability through state law to ask for a nonprofit pilot agreement with the organ in lieu of taxes. That can be done right now. Stop this. Our last one did not get negotiated because we didn't feel that we were going to receive enough funding from them. That got stalled, but that is something that could still be put on the table. And I just a quick comment on whether the state would look at nonprofit payroll tax. It's the changing of just a couple of words. And it would also help all the other municipalities within the state of Pennsylvania too. So I don't know if it's 100% off the table, maybe something that should be mentioned and talked about in Harrisburg. If that is the case, then of course it is, but we could always go with the nonprofits on the on the pilot agreement.
And and on the pilot agreement dating back from the last time that they contributed, what was that amount? Do we have a figure on that?
13 million at one. The high.
From UPMC, from Highmark, and who who else?
It was all the nonprofits. So there there were you know, the Catholic Church was involved in it. Other religious organizations were involved. In fact, it was Father Langwin who headed up the committee on the on the other end. So yeah, it paid from all of them. However, organizations such as Highmark ended up paying what the amount would have been for their payroll tax. So they, you know, some folks looked in and said, okay, we, this is really what could be contributed and did that.
And if the state legislature were to cooperate and we were to impose the payroll tax with them, any idea what that revenue would look like?
It'd be 20 to 25 million dollars. And once again, what what we had researched several years back was that in order to eliminate all of the the truly charitable organizations, you know, Little Sisters of the Poor, for example, in order to eliminate them, it would only be organizations that had payrolls in excess of $5 million.
Right, makes sense.
Yeah, so it narrowed it down to approximately 40 to 50 of the largest nonprofits for the city. And once again, it's exemption on that first $5 million in payroll. So if if someone had $5,100,000 in payroll, they would only be paying the tax on that 100,000.
Got it.
It was a fair way to do it, but still, you can see it creates a substantial sum of revenue for the city.
And dating back, when was the last time, what was the last year that they had voluntarily given?
I I don't have that offhand, but.
2014.
2014.
A little less than 2 million in 2014.
Less than $2 million. And their industry has not hurt through this all, from what I understand. They've actually upticked for the most part. But that's all. That's all my question was. I just really wanted to know about the nonprofits. Sure, but thank you.
Thank you. There are other members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Gross.
Thank you. Mr. Bannock, thank you so much for this highlight. It is really kind of the top level. One of the things that I just want to say again is that basically your presentation says that the mayor's proposal would have to be revisited mid-year.
Hopefully before that, but yes.
And so it really doesn't budget for 12 months.
No, it actually does.
It budgets for twelve months, but it doesn't balance for twelve months.
It does.
It hinges on the federal, no, I'm sorry, but you said it hinges on that federal infusion. And that if we don't get it, we have to change these expenditure numbers.
No, the expenditure numbers are
That is not what I heard. Can put, yes, please clarify.
Not being clear. It is a little confusing here. It if you look through the budget, they're not detailed, and that's the other reason why you wouldn't open it up. Departments have what we call a negative expenditure attached them, which would be a reduction in salaries beginning on July the first. So we would need to go in and depending upon what money, say we get ten million dollars. Well, maybe it's not that bad, you know, it's not as bad as as not having twenty six million. So you would need to go back in because you don't want to cut that much out of the budget. As I said, it puts us in a very precarious situation.
So slow down. For the viewer. When a viewer opens up the PDF for the budget, the proposed budget, what are they to look for? Let's let's pick one like the police. I don't know what page it's on here. I don't have got the budget up on my screen. Where is this negative expenditure line in the PDF that was released?
At the end of every
I'm sorry, this is really, I think it's important for us to just, since this is our kind of overview and briefing. It's important for us to understand this is different than last year's budget or different than, I I've never seen a budget, I think, like this. So I I need it to be explained to me, and so I'm assuming the listeners need it to be explained as well.
Well, you could go to city councils.
Sure, let's do that. What page are you looking at, do you know?
You know, the page number.
I'm just like scrolling while you're talking here, so I haven't found it.
Page one.
Thank you. Page fifty one.
Sixty one.
Sixty one.
Six one.
I'm almost there myself. And so what am I looking for?
There's going to be a line at the bottom of the salaries that say anticipated seven slash one workforce reduction.
Oh, well, that is a little bit obtuse there. Did I use the right vocabulary word? Yeah, okay. That's a little confusing. So that is for on page sixty one for the city council payroll budget. And that means that July first there would be a workforce reduction of ninety two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars.
That's on the on the council end, it's actually a workforce reduction of two hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars.
Okay, so why am I, why am I not seeing it that way?
Sorry, I sent you to the clerk's budget. Fifty five.
Page fifty five. I'm going to scroll back a little farther. That's okay. This is still a good example. Okay. So I see anticipated seven slash one workforce reduction at two hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars. Okay, so that's interesting. That's a different, that's a different thing to look for for each. Okay, so we need to look for that for each of the the departments. And you you gave us a synopsis in your slides. That's was what they kind of like. There was one slide that said on July first, there would be this much percentage for each department, and that's helpful too. But then we can go and see that on each of the department's individual pages, again, for the viewing public who don't really have our presentation. I mean, we're all just saying this for the first time, and it will be attached to this budget hearing in Legastar, so they can see your your PDF overview that we're seeing right now. I have a couple of things that are, I think, also simple and straightforward. You mentioned the trust funds and impress funds and things like that. And then you mentioned kind of right after that, the Stop the Violence Fund, which we just did final vote on today for those allocations. So I'm wondering, our amendment today, and I was confused about, and I wanted to, I want to thank the the clerk while I'm here and the 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 sponsors of the bill, because I was confused between last week and this week, and I thought that our amendment would not let us use it for the city budget, but that is in fact what the budget, the amendment that we voted on today allows us to do. So the six million dollars you referred to, we can use it places in the budget. Is that anywhere here that the public can see or I can see?
Yes, some of the positions in the in that Stop the Violence Trust Fund, which is on page four hundred something, were transferred from other departments.
Okay.
So if you go to the Public Safety Administration pages, there'll be apostrophes after, I think, five positions. A little note at the bottom that says transfer to Stop the Violence Trust Fund.
Is the converse true? Are the payments from the Stop the Violence Trust Fund budgeted in city departments like this, Community Health, that only has twenty thousand dollars? Or the Office of Equity or anyplace else?
There's a note in that new Office of Community Health and Safety that some of their functions are in the trust fund. So kind of.
Okay, so we we did vote today that we could use those funds to support you know, mission related activities that are payroll, our payroll activities. So but we it looks like this budget doesn't yet reflect that, which is fair because we just voted on it today. It wasn't, it wasn't voted on until today. But that's interesting. So we can look for that. I want to switch topics here. I I appreciate Mr. Coghill's questions about the nonprofit lack of participation, right? If that, like, some fourteen million or thirteen million had been paid for the last five years, right? We would be looking at another like sixty five, under seventy million dollars that we would have, and that's unfortunate. And it would be very helpful to have an additional thirteen million or more, potentially twenty million dollars if a lot of people has estimated what it should be, would go a long way to avoiding the kinds of workforce reductions we could be anticipating this year. And and it's these services that these departments deliver are very important. When we're talking about doing equity work, we're talking about a lot of work being done by city planning. When we're talking about reinvesting in neighborhoods and doing neighborhood development, we need P L I reviewers and inspectors to do that work. So those reductions will have a negative effect on a potential reduction, so a very negative effect on the work we're trying to do to invest in Pittsburghers and their neighborhoods. And so just to to finish, I have a lot of small businesses in my district. And we're very lucky and we're trying to do a lot of work at the neighborhood level to support them. Some other of my colleagues are working to create more small business activity. And we have transferred almost all of our federal, small bits of federal money from the crisis to the U R A to support both housing, so tenants and and homeowners and small businesses. Here's my question that you probably can't answer right now, but I am interested in where we saw reduced revenue. You mentioned, Mr. Bannock, in your presentation that the larger employers have stayed open and have maintained, for example, their payroll payments. Right? And so we have, we're lucky, we didn't see more revenue loss from them from places like U P M C or places, U P C does pay, right? But the big financial centers, banks and things like that. Can we, can I get an analysis of which businesses closed and did not pay their payroll tax? And so can I get an analysis here during budget season of see what kinds of businesses and where the businesses are so that we can, I want to kind of see if our right hand is doing what our left is seeing what our left hand is doing, right? Do we have the right kinds of programs to support small businesses, right? Are we targeting the kinds of businesses that actually have closed and are not paying their payroll tax? Like, we have data that we haven't really looked at. Because, gosh, if we could reopen them all tomorrow, we'd be filling back in that thirteen million dollars of lost revenue.
Yeah.
Did that, did that make sense?
Yeah, no.
Am I clear?
You make absolute sense. I think we'd have to depend on the Finance Department, the U R A. We are information on individual taxpayers. That
Sure. And it could be summarized. I'm not asking aggregated. I'm not asking to look into individual business names myself. But our finance department does know who paid and who didn't pay. And then could summarize that for us, map it, redact it, whatever they need to do, so to give us to paint, help us paint a picture, right? Do you know that they have that in a format that can be easily outfitted? The last time I was down in the finance department looking over people's shoulders a few years ago, they were still working in Excel spreadsheets. We have paid a great deal of money, at least a million or more, for them to put that money into fancier software or put those transactions into fancier software that could be pulled out with a query, but I don't know if that's happened yet.
That's your your guess is as good as mine.
All right, well, we'll find out. Okay, then I'll I'll stop asking you that question, but I am very curious to know, right? It's it's a very big topic for for constituents and for city residents to say like, hey, like, where's the state money to support businesses, right? Harrisburg, we know, is sitting on a hundred million dollars that they haven't moved through. We're looking for the federal government also to support businesses. We're we're getting questions in our offices about like people who are trying to get their their loans of various kinds from not just the U R A, but from state and an appointment assistance and things like that. And that all adds up to helping businesses reopen, having to strengthen neighborhoods like we we always try to do. But then also to see our tax revenue come actually in. All right, I appreciate. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members? Seeing none, I just want to also thank our Budget Office as Kevin Paulus allowing everyone to work together to get to this point. Our budget hearings will continue tomorrow at one thirty with the Office of Management and Budget, which is chaired by myself. So we now need a motion to recess this meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All those who favor say aye. We are in recess.